Great, so we'll get started. It's after, hi Sarah.
Hi Sarah.
It's after 5:30, so we'll go ahead and open the meeting of the Northampton Zoning Board of Appeals. Notice of today's meeting was published on November 3rd and November 10th. I am David Bloomberg and with me on the board today are Maureen Scanlon and Sarah Northrup and along with Carolyn Mish from the City of Northampton. We have two items on the agenda. But before we get to those two items, we will ask if there's anyone from the public joining us who would like to comment on matters other than the two agenda items. Carolyn, I'll ask you to confirm that we're not seeing anybody?
I don't see any hands raised for anything that's not on the public hearing.
Okay, and then for the two items on the agenda, I'll ask that we'll start with a presentation by the applicant or the representative of the applicant. Just a brief presentation because we have materials that we've been looking at. And then the board will have a chance to ask questions, then members of the public, if any, will have a chance to comment or ask questions. And I would ask that everyone who speaks first, identify yourself with a name and address for the record that Carolyn is keeping. So we'll go ahead now and hear from the applicant or the representative of the applicant for the special permit for Dollar Tree to install a rear wall sign higher than allowed and a side wall sign larger than allowed at 172 North King Street MAP ID 18-15. And who's here for that?
I'm Paul D. Chrysantus from Artifact Science.
Hello?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go right ahead.
Paul D. Chrysantus from Artifact Science in Bloomfield, Connecticut. I see that we've also got representatives from Anchor Sign and from Dollar Tree's National Council on the in the audience as well. So the regulations say that in this zone, one main wall sign is allowed. And typically that means street frontage. In this particular case, as you, this is in a a big plaza, there's a car dealership, a huge Walmart, and then there's this store up front where the Dollar Tree is going. The way the building is situated, the main wall, what I'm calling the main wall of the entrance is actually perpendicular to the street. So really what we're asking for is for the main frontage sign to be considered as as where the entrance goes. I'm referring to sign A.
Okay, so of this. I'm sorry, I'll let him, let you finish your presentation before I start asking questions?
Well, I mean, I think that if we're trying to be brief in a nutshell, that covers it. The size of the sign would be allowed. I'm sorry. Yeah, and if the building was situated differently, we wouldn't be having this call. So really what we're asking for is for sign A, that sidewall to be recognized as the main wall since the front entrance. And I know the previous tenants there, the mattress firm, and another Sleepy's mattress store before that put their larger sign on that, on that entrance. So we're asking for the same consideration that the last two tenants have had.
So go ahead, Sarah, go ahead. Did you have questions?
Yeah, I'd just like to sort of, could you please, Lauren, go through sign A, B, C, D? I see they are tabulated, you're showing or you're sharing your screen. Which sign is which? Just summarize. And then
Okay.
So, so, so that we are specific about what the permit is requesting.
Sign D, which is a non-issue for tonight's call, is a, it's a pylon sign right by the street. There's a sign there for what hopefully will be Dollar Tree. Later down the road in the same plaza, there's a Walmart sign and further down the road, again, on the other end of the plaza is a car dealership. So everyone gets a street sign. The way the, sign B is the what I would call the side of the building, since it's the side of the entrance. Side, sign B is facing the road. So I think based on your regulations, you're calling that the the main frontage. When in fact, sign A is over the front door, that would be the entrance of the store. So I'm calling sign A the frontage or the main sign, even though it faces not even a parking lot, it faces a driveway. And sign C, I would call that to the right of the entrance. I think you would call that the rear sign since it's parallel to the street but behind the building.
Okay, so the one that is in the application is called a rear sign. Which one is that?
What's called a rear sign would be sign C. I'm sorry. Excuse me for just a moment.
So I can also clarify, so sign C and sign A are part of the special permit application. Sign A is the size that would be allowed as a front wall sign, a maximum of 100 square feet or 10% of the facade area. Sign C is part of the special permit application as well because it, a rear wall sign has a special permit threshold if it's above 10 feet above grade. And so it is higher than 10 feet above grade. So that's why that's here for special permit. So they're just two of the total four signs that would trigger a special permit.
Correct.
So, so can I ask for clarification on that, Carolyn? It looks like what I'm reading is that sign C is the one that's 10 feet above grade.
Correct, yep.
Okay, so we're really the two. So we're really the, the, it's a technique, the A, B is kind of a technicality because what do you, what you call the front versus the side is doesn't quite sync with what what it's zoned as, but I think
It's the orientation of the building. It is not in the same orientation as the way the sign code reads. So they're essentially requesting a swap and have the sidewall sign by be the front wall and the sidewall size allowance be the on the side.
The side rather than a rear.
And the sign D is simply the streets, like sign that everybody has, that all the tenants in the plaza have. Okay.
That's right.
Okay, and what about that 10 feet above grade factor? What should we be taking into consideration regarding that?
So that is
Typically, the, the reason for that is that you know, rear wall signs are intended for sort of the back of buildings, I think, in an area where that faces a parking lot. I I don't, it's been on the books for many, many years, so I don't really know what the original intention for the 10 foot. But I think you know, if you think about a truly tall building and where that sign is, the higher it is, it might be trying to target properties beyond the immediate area. And so I think the goal would be to make sure it's low enough, so it's really just focused on the the people within the context of that property, which is why I assume that we have that regulation. And so in this scenario, you know, it is a quite, quite a large parking lot. So having it slightly higher allows projection sort of further away. But again, you have the allowance in the special permit section to grant a special permit if there is something about the building the architecture orientation that warrants consideration of a different standard. And so in this case, the building is oriented differently and it also is sort of a standalone in a big sea of parking. So those are some considerations you could utilize in evaluating the application.
Good, thank you for that clarification.
Couldn't have said it better myself. Thank you, Carolyn.
And if the, and if the front door of the building had been facing the road, basically, sign A and sign B would be allowed, right? Because sign B meets the sidewall sign, it just happens to be the front of the building because the front door is on that side.
Right, exactly.
And then the sign A meets the front wall requirements, but it happens to be the side of the building. Okay, right, so
Because of its orientation.
Right. No, please, go ahead.
And you know, what we're trying to say is that you know, we could put a sign A on what you now call sign B and show the street frontage, but the way that the building is made, there's a clear sign band on the front wall, on the, on the main entrance wall and on the two sidewalls. And you know, beyond that, it's just cement blocks, I believe. And then also, we do have a freestanding sign near the road, and that typically lets traffic know that oh, there is a Dollar Tree here, but it doesn't tell them that the Dollar Tree is right there. So they know to go into that driveway to find the Dollar Tree. And what we're saying is that, once they do that, the first thing they're going to do is to look where this Dollar Tree is, but the first thing you do is you look towards the back because you want to make sure that, you know, you don't hit any other cars in the parking lot. And they see the big Walmart sign. And with respect to the Chevy dealer, they'll see all the Chevys parked in their parking lot, so they know that's the Chevy dealer. But by the time they find Dollar Tree, they've already passed. And if you limit them to a sign B or a sidewall size restriction, it's just going to be hard to read. You know, that, that's why they also have some trees, you know, some decorative trees, so you gotta look through the leaves to locate it.
Okay. And what about, what about lighting for the signs?
These are channel, channel letters, they'll be internally lit. Very much like the, exactly like the last two tenants that were there.
And was there a plan to put timers on the lights, for instance, to turn them off when the business is closed?
Hi. Hi, it's Valerie with Anchor Sign.
Hi Valerie.
Hi, I'll just speak to the timer thing. And also Scott Kipnis is on. And he is Dollar Tree's legal counsel. But regarding the timer for the signs, they go off an hour after the store closes. So if the store is open till nine, the signs will go off at 10. They are on and they run on an EMS system.
Okay, so there would be an objection then if we made that a condition of the permit approval? Since you're doing it anyway.
Yeah, we leave it, this is Scott Kipnis, sorry. We leave it an hour just for safety for our associates.
Or, yeah, no, yeah.
Takes it out and the store doesn't have the ability to override it, it's, it's controlled by the corporate office.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good. Any other board members with questions? No? And
I would ask, see, this is Sarah Northrup again, about the, the brightness has have, there been any comments from DPW? Is there any? Has this been evaluated for meeting the lighting standards, the brightness? I'm aware that since the other previous signs have been removed and it's I think it's been closed for a while, we're adding lighting and I'm always cognizant, just you know, we have so much excess ambient light at night and residential area just to the west of the property that I'd like to know that these LEDs aren't too bright.
I'll speak to that.
Lighting plan gets reviewed at the time they pull a building permit or the sign permit, and they can't do that till after the appeal period for this. So all of those get reviewed at that time.
Okay.
Reviewed for compliance with our, with our ordinance, right, for
Right.
Yes.
For lumens.
Yeah, if you give us, if you give us the lumen requirements, Valerie can have that set either through the thickness of the acrylic letters or on a dimmer, so.
And we do, these signs come standard for Dollar Tree that we build with a diffuser on the front.
Right.
So the, we do limit the light that's coming out of the signs just standardly.
Any other questions from board members? If not, I'll ask if Carolyn, do we, do we see anyone? Members of the public who wanted to comment or ask questions about this application?
No, I don't see any hands raised.
So I guess, question for the board, do we first have a motion to close the public hearing? After which, we would normally deliberate and vote on a motion to, on the, on the application. But once we close the public hearing, we're not able to have any more comment or input from the applicant or the public. But if the board feels like we have all the information we need to make a decision, we could entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
I can move to close the public hearing. I'm comfortable with moving moving this forward, yep.
Second. We have a second, and because we're virtual, we need a roll call vote, please, Carolyn.
Sharon Northrup?
Yes.
Maureen Scanlon?
Yes.
And David Bloomberg?
Yes, so the public hearing is closed, that's unanimous. Now we can have discussion or a motion on the application for the special permit. By the way, I'm completely comfortable with this, especially if we had a condition that the lights will be turned off one hour after the business closes.
I'll take a stab at framing a notion. Motion, excuse me. All right, so as far as conditions, we talked about the timing of the lighting being turned off and otherwise meeting all the codes. Just checking over our recommendations. Thank you, Carolyn. All right. I move that we approve the special permit for signage at 180 North King Street.
172, 170, I think.
172, okay.
Agenda says.
Oh, yes, yes. I'm looking at the at our information sheet with the photo and the compliance.
But there was a mix up on the map ID and address in the application. So I was trying to correct it in the staff memo.
Okay, thank you.
180, is it 180? I guess we better get that ready.
Yeah.
Dollar Tree as presented under the condition that the light illumination of the, of all signs is turned off an hour after store closing.
Does that cover us? And do we have the correct address? If so, I'll second that motion. Sorry for the vagueness there. Are we 180 or are we 172?
I see that it's 172 on the assessor's data, but we'll have, we have the map ID, which is the legal, more of a legal description than addressing. So I think you're covered.
Okay, so let's make sure we include the the map ID in the motion.
18-15.
Yeah, okay, then, second.
And just in terms of discussion, we closed the public hearing. It occurs to me we didn't address when the lights are going to be turned on before the business opens.
I wouldn't turn them on before the business opens. I don't want them coming on at six in the morning.
That's the point, yeah.
I mean, the, you know, signs aren't used for direction, for aiding walkers or drivers. So they, you know, I don't know that you you know, you could say that it could come on at you know, at business opening, but there are required lights over the entrances, cars driving in have headlights, they can see their shopping lot parcel lights. So there's no reason for the sign lights to be on before the close of business. I mean, before the open of business, I would say. So you could certainly add that as part of the clarification of the condition to say that they don't turn on before business opening and they close an hour after or they're turned off after, an hour after close.
Yes.
Okay. So we have a second, so I guess, I guess we just could take a roll call vote on the, well, is that, are we making that formally an amendment to the motion? I think we are.
Yeah.
Turn off an hour after closing and turn on and won't be turned on until opening.
Yes.
Yep.
And
Okay, so that's oh, you want me to do the roll call or?
Yeah, with, as long as we're clear about those two conditions, okay. Otherwise as presented. Yeah, please, roll call, please.
Sharon Northrup?
Yes.
Maureen Scanlon?
Yes.
And David Bloomberg?
Yes, that's unanimous.
Great.
So I think we can move on to the second item on the agenda.
And congratulations.
Yes, okay. So the other, the second and last item on the agenda is the request for a special permit art defects for a larger blade sign and more than one front wall sign at 14 Green Street, Northampton, MAP ID 31D-52. This is the application for new signage for the corner of Green Street and West Street, I guess. Smith College bookstore is going to be going in there. So do we have the representative of the applicant here or the applicant?
There's someone muted trying to speak.
Hi, my name is Lauren Rosen and I own Artifacts. I'm representing Smith College and their new bookstore, which is moving from the Student Center to 14 Green Street. And we have had a couple of iterations with this project. And I think you have the most recent, I hope. On the corner, it has three facets. And it's a collective 90 feet plus or minus of frontage. You know, I guess you allow one sign with this particular frontage, as you can see, the sign band is fairly narrow and it's segmented and broken apart by pilasters. It's also an unusual frontage in the sense that it's trisided. So you know, as you look at it, facet A on the left-hand side really says Smith College Bookstore, although it may appear as two signs. The letters are centered within bays that are within the pilasters. And unfortunately, I'm looking at an older version right now. If you can can you
So just to clarify, we never got a digital version of the updated plans. We got a paper version, but I'll describe the changes to the board so that they're aware, which was done in text. So this Smith College is moved around to the corner and instead of having a projecting blade sign here, they put this emblem up here on the corner face. So this is no longer part of the special permit application request because this is a projection beyond the by right projection from the wall, and it becomes a a front wall sign. And because it's a corner building, you're, they're allowed to have two, but the logo sign becomes the third sign. So the board is, the special permit request would be for a third front wall sign, effectively.
Carolyn, would, would you be able to share a screen with me?
I did think, I think you're all set for shared screen. Let me just double check here. Oh, no, it went away. Tommy's a fast cat.
Are you catching that?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so there you go. So if I can describe the fabrication, there are non-illuminated letters for a Smith College bookstore. And I have one right here that's primed. This is the M, which you're probably seeing backwards. It's a prismatic style letter, which means it's pyramidal in its profile. And it's stud mounted to the building with a standoff of a half inch above it. We make custom strip fixtures. And these particular fixtures fit exactly into the opening between the pilasters. They're powered by 3500 Kelvin LEDs. So it's a pretty warm light. Smith College bookstore on both sides, same method, same lighting technique. Pretty subtle, really. It just highlights the letters as a spotlight would highlight an actor on stage. It's pretty tailored to the message. And the sign in the center is a stencil cut illuminated sign. It's stencil cut through eighth inch aluminum plate. The letters light. They have acrylic that's inserted and dimensional, proud of the face by three eighths of an inch. The building in the center, which is part of the Smith College logo, is also stencil cut. And that's projected through the center. It's also three eighths of an inch proud of the face. Inside are 3500 LEDs, 3500 Kelvin that match the custom strip lights. So the lighting's consistent throughout. So collectively, you know, just square footage wise. On 90, I'm sorry, we have 95 linear feet of frontage. And we have a cumulative square footage on the signs of 40.1 square feet.
Is that measuring the letters themselves or the box around the letters?
It is, it's, it's drawing perimeters around the word groups. So Smith College being one, bookstore being another, and the circular piece being, the logo being another. Now, if we were to expand that and include the space, let's say between Smith College and bookstore, you would increase the square footage by approximately You would increase the square footage by approximately ten square feet. And that pretty much describes it. I'm happy to answer any technical questions or.
Carolyn, could you clarify what warrants, what requires the special permit? I mean, I had spent some time looking at what we had previously. But how much, what does this change in terms of what, what they're asking us to, okay?
So it's still all special in a special permit per view, essentially. It's, you know, two signs. Per facade except for the center or one larger rectangular sign. So if you if you draw a box around Smith College bookstore on both sides, that could be two signs. And then the third sign is in the middle on the third facade. So you're allowed two wall signs for corner buildings. And so those Smith College bookstore signs would be allowed. It's really now just the emblem as the third sign. That would be special permit.
I'm sorry, thank you, okay. And there's only one entrance, right?
Yes, the entrance is on that right facet.
Could you speak to the lighting? I saw the M that you held up as a, so that's a one-inch prismatic letter. That'll be mounted with a half inch spacer off of the brick surface. It says lit from above with slim line.
This letter is going to be sprayed and off off white. Low luster. What's called catalyzed acrylic polyurethane. Essentially, it's an epoxy paint. That has longevity. The lighting above. It's a very thin profile. Strip light, it kind of goes away. It's painted smith green, which is kind of a black green. That goes with the metalwork on the building. And it's a semi-circular. Three inch in one direction, an inch and a half in the other direction.
Can you show us the fixture itself?
Yeah.
How far out from the surface of the building is it standing out? Oh, there we are.
Yeah, there you go. So it's sixteen inches out, so. It's manufactured in such a way where we're able to keep a pretty tight profile to the building. Sixteen inches is about the maximum we would go. And the way the scoop is set in the lighting inside. The beam that comes out pretty much hits three to four inches above the letters and three to four inches below. So it's a controlled beam. That's rectangular. And we manufacture the fixtures here. They're UL rated and we have a few hundred out in the field. I can send you photos. We just did a beautiful sign for Connecticut College down in New London. With the same lighting method. In fact, if you'd like to see it, oh, you know, there's one in town. We've done a lot of signs in Northampton. We did it for Ananda Colsa, which is a jewelry store. Which also has about a three thousand or thirty-five hundred Kelvin. That would be a good example.
So the school seal, the college seal is backlit?
That's backlit, but what you see in white is what lights.
Right, okay, so I followed that correctly and that particular, the round, the seal would need to have the light on for the, for it to function, for it to read.
No, no, it could be non-illuminated as well. We wouldn't want it to light much past eleven o'clock at night. It shouldn't light at night and it really doesn't have to light during the day.
Okay.
Because the acrylic is what is referred to as milk white. Which is kind of an off-off white. It's translucent. But it shows up, you know, it contrasts against that dark black green during the day, so it doesn't require lighting until nighttime. What I like about it and the reason I kind of suggested it. It breaks up the monotony of the overhead lighting. So it's pairing direct backlighting with you know, spotlighting. And the effect is is kind of nice. It's kind of if you can compare it to a ring, it's like the setting within the ring.
Looks nice. What is the height of that? The corner emblem?
Two foot three, so twenty-seven inches.
Sorry, how high is it off of the ground?
Height wise off the ground, it's, I could do some easy calculations. It's seven plus three plus three. Ten thirteen, about thirteen foot even.
Thank you. Great, I don't have any other concerns.
Okay. If there are no other questions from board members, are there any members of the public waiting who want to comment? Nope, we don't see anybody.
No, we've dropped everyone.
I'm not sure at what stage we should, I would like to talk through the hours it will be lit, turned on and off. Want to make sure we have that opportunity to have that discussion.
Yeah, I think the bookstore. They either close at ten or eleven and I apologize. Not knowing the exact time, but I'm, I'm sure it's a sign that's not so much for advertising as it is for just identity, destination, location type thing. So I'm sure they would be amenable to whatever you felt was reasonable. I think, you know, ten or eleven is traditionally. You know, what would be fair in this type of zoning.
Okay.
I mean, you could just say that it's on only during operating hours.
Yeah, or during operating hours. That's probably a good idea. In the sense that, you know, people don't walk up to the door and see that it's locked.
Well, that feels appropriate to me, particularly because there is along that stretch in both directions, quite a bit of residential units.
Yeah.
So I think that would be respectful and appropriate that the light, that it's illuminated only during business hours.
Exactly.
I agree.
Good. Are we ready to close the public hearing?
Sure, I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, and roll call please.
Sarah North.
Yes.
Maureen Scanlon.
Yes.
And David Bloomberg.
Yes, the public hearing's closed, so now do we have a motion on the application for the special permit?
If you'd like to phrase that, Maureen.
What do I need in front of me? Sure.
The, from the email.
Right.
Nice statement of.
I would, I would move that we approve the special permit. As well, the phrasing in what we were given in the agenda is no longer current, but it, because there's no blade sign. So for as presented, two sidewall signs, Smith College bookstore and one central on the third, the corner facade, the college seal, backlit illuminated as presented. And the lighting as presented with no, and this is map ID thirty-one D fifty-two at fourteen Green Street. With the stipulation condition that the lighting is only on during operating hours.
And second please.
Second.
Any more discussion?
I like it.
Okay. So I guess just a roll call, please.
Sarah North.
Yes.
Maureen Scanlon.
Yes.
And David Bloomberg.
Yes, that's unanimous, that's approved.
Thank you. It's always a pleasure to deal with Northampton. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The, I don't know if, I don't think we have any minutes, so do we have to talk it all about schedules, scheduling going forward or before we?
You do have a, you do have a meeting December eighth, just FYI, but I'll send that out.
Is that the one that was continued or is there something else?
There is an additional item as well, but there was, is the continuation and then actually there are two items. I think one is a sign and the other one is an appeal.
Sarah, Carolyn, I would like to access the video of the meetings prior regarding that continuation. And I don't know how to access that. I tried, I couldn't find it.
Oh. Yeah, they're all at Northampton Open Media. So if you go to Northampton Media, openmedia.gov, they have a government video link and they're all in there.
Okay, and I just need to look up the date of when that last meeting was.
Yeah, I mean, it'll be there by date.
Maureen, you must be talking about the meeting where there was a substantive discussion where we issued our last decision on that.
Yes, I was part of the original meeting, but then I was not part of the other meeting and because we have not been able to approve minutes from it, I don't know what transpired at that meeting. So.
Oh, there was, the continued, the one continuation was continued without opening.
Yeah, there was no.
So there's nothing to review.
The only substantive meeting goes back.
So it was not, there wasn't a presentation about continuing it?
No, we never opened.
Okay.
It was simply granting the continuance, which has happened a couple of times, just so you're not looking for things unnecessarily.
Yep.
There was the decision we rendered way back, maybe last year, I can't.
Right, that's the one I was present for.
Right, that, yeah, that was the only substantive one. And Carolyn, just so I'm clear, on the eighth, we have you mentioned an appeal. Is the appeal you're talking about, is that the continuance, the continuation?
No, it's a, it's another appeal.
So it's two.
A new one, yeah.
And, and the, and what was the third thing on the eighth?
I think it's a sign.
Okay. And I guess you're not able to give us any updates on what's happening with the one that was continued. I know we cannot talk substance, but okay, so. Okay, so I guess, and just, and I, I, I should, I plan to be available the eighth, just. Sarah and Maureen, do you know if you'll be available on the eighth?
I thought it was the seventh, but whatever it is, I know I'm available. I made it, made myself available.
I think it's the eighth, yeah, Thursday the eighth.
Thursday the eights?
Yes.
Yes.
Great.
Right.
Okay, so now I think we could, I guess we could move to adjourn now.
So moved.
Second.
Hey, in a roll call.
Sarah North.
Yes.
Maureen Scanlon.
Yes.
And David Bloomberg.
Yes. Thank you, everybody.